I'd like to welcome you all to the Provo Municipal Council Regular Meeting. It is Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-nine, and it is five thirty-three P. M. At this time, the elected officials we have with us today are Counselor George Handley, Counselor Becky Bogdan, Counselor Rachel Whipple, myself, Catrice McKay, Counselor Craig Christensen, and Counselor Gary Garrett. Is Travis online? All right, and we have Counselor Travis Hoben on Zoom. The opening prayer will be provided today by Richard Bowler and the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Craig Christensen.
Father and Heth, we are very grateful for being together in this evening and enjoy this beautiful city in which we are blessed with. We are grateful for those who serve us on this council and in other responsible positions in city government. And we pray that they will use their knowledge and wisdom wisely in considering the things that are before them. And that we as citizens will express our interest and do those things that we can to further the progress in this great city. We're thankful for all that we are blessed with and pray for those things that we really need to happen in the name of Jesus.
Thank you, Richard.
At the beginning, the new life of the United States of America, and to the recovery of the poor, to the貧, and the nation under God, in the visible, the progressive, and justice world.
All right, we'd like to recognize that the mayor, Michelle Cuffusy, has joined us, and she will do the Provo City Employee of the Month.
Chair McKay, Vice Chair Whipple, and members of the Municipal Council, today we have the privilege of celebrating an outstanding employee who is consistently bringing dedication and care to our community. It is my pleasure to introduce Brian Jones, our city attorney and legal department director, who will present the December two thousand twenty-four Employee of the Month Award to a remarkable member of our legal team. So, Brian, please take the floor and lead us in honoring this exceptional individual.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. Can I have Matt Griffiths come up and accompany me? Matt asked me about five minutes ago if he needed to put a tie on, and I said, well, unless you're sure you didn't win, you should, you better put a tie on and come up. I did say to my department, in recognition of everyone, I did say, when I invited everybody to come down to this, that we had a really hard time as an executive team choosing someone because we have an exceptional department full of exceptional members. But Matt stands out among them, and that was why he was our choice. He has been with the city since two thousand seventeen. He started as a part-time domestic violence prosecutor. He actually was promoted, when he took full-time work, to a non-attorney position and became the city safety coordinator for the entire city, a position that he still holds even after he was promoted to attorney. He has run a number of impressive safety initiatives. He's revamped our motor vehicle policy. He rewrote the city's safety manual after, I don't know how many years of that being on the bottom of everyone's checklist. He has done human's work in administering the accident review board with Scott Henderson and the department directors that reviews our motor vehicle accidents. What else can I tell you about Matt? Before coming here, he clerked for Judge Iyer in the Fourth District Court, worked in West Valley City, and then did a stint in California before coming back. He is also now our supervisor of all of our student law clerks, and they love working for him, and he's been a great mentor to them. He's been a fantastic member of the department. He has stepped up since the departure of Judge Schreiner and the promotion of Robert Trombley to be the chief prosecutor. He's now essentially our de facto deputy chief prosecutor. He's doing more prosecution work. He continues to handle the safety stuff. He represents the energy department, and they love him and love to invite him to all of their dinners and to their board meetings. He's a fantastic employee. He is diligent and dedicated and never complains and is a wonderful asset to the office, and we appreciate so much everything that he's done, and this is an honor well deserved. Congratulations.
Next, we'll go over the annual comprehensive financial report by John Borget. And John, I have to say, was this a different, I feel like this was a different format than usual.
It's pretty much the same.
It seemed like so new and wonderful to me. I really liked it, but.
Okay, well, it is, it is wonderful, and I'll say it's new. It's good. So, excited to come before you to go over our annual comprehensive financial report. I would mention that we met a couple of weeks ago with the Audit Committee and went over the report with the committee. I would just mention that I really feel like the Audit Committee is working well, and it's well designed to work. We have great committee members and a great process. I would also say that Justin does a great job working with that committee and making sure that it operates as it should. It's a large report. It has one hundred and forty-seven pages, a lot of information, and so what I'm going to do is just focus on some key pages. I would encourage you to to continue with a review, and then after I'm finished, we're turning the time over for a few minutes to Jeff Miles, who's our city auditor, and he will talk a little bit about the opinion and touch on some things as well. So, I've got some slides here, and I'm just going to kind of walk you through. The first thing, towards the front of the report, there's, it's called a letter of transmittal, and the design and purpose of letter of transmittal is just to kind of give the reader an overview of the report, talk about some significant things, and most importantly, provide an introduction and kind of an overall setting for getting things in place to understand the report. This is something that we're required by state law to provide our annual, our financial report. We have until, for six months, so we have to deliver it to the council and then submit it to the state, and our state auditor's office goes through and reviews it. The report, a lot of times, it may feel like that it's the auditor's report, but it's not. It's our report. It's the city's report. It's a representation of management of the overall financial position and condition of the city, and so we don't take that lightly. We, the auditors actually have us fill out what's called a management representation letter, and in that letter, it goes through and talks about all the different elements of the report, and most importantly, that we are responsible for it. And I sign it as well as Scott Henderson, and each year when I sign that, I always take it very seriously. As I mentioned, HBME is our auditors, and they went through and reviewed the statements, and I will give Jeff the opportunity to kind of expound and talk a little bit about their opinion. There's an overview of the city, and a couple of things I just want to mention is that the economy, Provo's economy, as we all know, is diverse. It's great that we have BYU and UBU close by. Technology is a huge aspect of this county and of the city itself, and also healthcare with Intermountain Healthcare and the regional hospital there are great benefit, provides some good variety. The overall economy and talking about the economic condition, overall, the economy is resilient, but as we all see, it's faced challenges. We continue to have some challenges with inflation and the market, but once again, we're hopeful and optimistic going forward. Utah's economy is dynamic and robust, and one of the great things about being in Utah is that we have great overall representation. Our leaders do a great job, and we are truly one of the economic leaders throughout the country. But as that being said, we still in Provo, in Provo and in Utah, have seen some of those impacts from the inflationary impacts and overall just the settling of the economy. In the third paragraph, it talks a little bit about sales tax, about tax revenue. Our tax revenue was absolutely up about one point five million or two and a half percent. Sales tax was relatively flat this year. We've seen, we, as we watched it this year, it's showing a similar pattern, but we're just watching and monitoring it closely. Our property tax was actually up. Some of that was due to collections. The other was due to the fact that in fiscal twenty-four, there was an increase of a hundred thousand for the library, and there was also an increase for general operations of about two hundred seventy-five thousand. And so that, with those, as well as helping collections, there was some increased revenue there. But overall, our overall tax revenue for the year and our overall revenues were relatively, didn't grow as much, and so we, as we met with the directors and as we shared with council, we were watching and monitoring sales tax closely each month, and we did a number of things fiscally to manage and look at over, and I'll share those a little bit later on in the report. As far as major initiatives, we just, I just want to mention three. One, of course, was the opening of our epic sports park on September twenty-first, major event. Also, the construction of our new fire station, which the open house was held on December seventh, just recently, and we're excited to have it complete. And then the addition of the Super Target store in the Provo Center Mall has had a significant impact on the mall, and we're optimistic and hopeful about that. In the report are some significant events that are listed from each of the departments. I'm not going to go through those right now with you, but I would encourage you to look over those, and those that are listening and watching today, I would encourage you, and I will share at the end how you can have access to the report if you want to pull it up online. But a number of significant accomplishments throughout for the departments.
John, I think it'd be important to let the public know that the auditor is hired separate from the administration to show that differentiation that we are auditing ourselves.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. So, the way that it works, and it mentions it in the transmittal letter, I probably just went through it a little bit too quickly, but the municipal council actually goes out and contracts with an independent auditor, and that auditor is asked to go in and take an independent look and review the financial statements to make sure that they are presented according to accounting principles and that they are stated correctly. And we're going to give Jeff Miles, who's not part of the city and is an independent auditor, the opportunity to share that. So, thank you. Another thing that we've done for a number of years is we submit our report to GFOA, Governmental Financial Officers Association, and they review the report, and they provide us feedback on the overall content, the way it's presented, and that it's meeting the required elements. And then they determine whether our award, our report is, receives their excellence in reporting reward, and we did receive that again this year for two thousand twenty-three, and we will submit the two thousand twenty-four report as well. Also, want to express some appreciation particularly to our finance team. Kelsey Zarback is our, and she's here. We want to thank Kelsey for her leadership in the role of managing and working with the auditors and putting the report together. Also want to thank some other important team members, Dan Follett of Finance, as well as Anisa Orwin and Stephanie Green and Andrea Wright, all significant helpers. We want to thank them for that. And we also want to thank our directors and administration. They all play an important role, and the municipal council has been very helpful and cooperative, and so it's a citywide effort. It truly is. This next page is our governmental funds statement, and it's on page thirty-six, and I have highlighted the unassigned balance of twenty-four and a half million. That's an equivalent in the private sector to what we call unrestricted retained earnings. That is the money that's available for future needs. Operation, you know, could be working capital, operating needs, as well as a potential rainy day fund or anticipated needs that come in, and I'll give a little more context to that number as I show some comparative data, but it's significant and important. See if I can get this to keep scrolling here. It's like my, for some reason, my clicker just stopped. There we go. Okay, this is where we want to be. This also shows kind of the revenues and expenses, and you can see that despite the challenges that we had during the year of some of our revenues leveling, we still had a net change in fund balance of about two point two million. We pretty much broke even, but we did have, we did sell some property at Mountain Vista that kind of provided that, but overall, it's still positive that we did have a net two point two increase in fund balance. Now, this is really interesting. This shows a five-year comparison, and you can see that over the timeframe, as a percentage of revenue, we went from twenty-two point nine four in two thousand twenty to thirty-two nine one, point nine one in two thousand twenty-four, increased just slightly over the prior year. But what's significant is you look at, there are two numbers that are there under the general fund balance. There's an unassigned and an assigned number. What the assigned fund balance is, is encumbrances for things that, purchases that we're making or dollars that we're asking to be carried over to the next year. One of the things that we did, and we actually shared and discussed with the council in September, our recommended carryovers, but this year, we had much more scrutiny because we were concerned and really wanted to take care of fund balance as much as we could because of the fact that we were managing our, and watching our revenues closely. And so our assigned number actually went down by two million dollars, and I would just say that's not by chance. That's by what I would call good fiscal management and being conservative and trying to just make sure and be as prudent as we could and only carrying over valid key items that we felt like needed to be carried over. If there were things that were discretionary and we could, we really didn't have to, we didn't. Then the other thing that's significant is the unassigned went up by three and a half million from the previous year, which is significant, and I would say a lot of that came from not carrying those funds over as well as, as I mentioned, a sell of some property. But once again, positive indications, and it's also positive that our overall percentage went up as well as in dollars. This next slide is really interesting. This shows kind of the ten-year trend of fund balance, and you can see that dotted line, but it went from around eighteen percent in two thousand fifteen up to our roughly thirty-three percent now. And so that's been positive. I'd also mention that during this timeframe, the state changed the maximum amount that they would allow to have in fund balance, and it went from twenty-five percent to thirty-five percent, and we are roughly at thirty-three, which is close to that number. I would mention that I really don't feel like we have excessive fund balance or that we have more than we need. I think that's the reason that the state has increased that limit because they understand the need, and I think we're just following the state's recommendations. I think that's very positive. This shows fund balance over the last ten years in dollars. I think it's significant that that unassigned revenue balance, the unassigned fund balance in two thousand fifteen being eight point six million to where now it's twenty-four and a half million, significant increase in dollars in the unassigned fund balance. And once again, I would say that that's a good fiscal management, and it hasn't come just by relaxing. It's become by managing and whatnot, but I would say that we're in a good position, the general fund for fund balance, and we're watching that and trying to maintain that.
Quick question. What does non-spendable mean?
It primarily is inventory, but it's certain items that you have in your, on your balance sheet that you really aren't going to go out and spend or utilize if you were to have an emergency or need it tomorrow, and so they define it as unspendable. So, that's probably, that's where it is. This shows sales tax. This shows all of our tax revenue, but what I think's really significant here is that as you look at sales tax, you can see moderate increases, but during the, basically, you can see in twenty-one and twenty-two, okay, as a result of the COVID and all the spending that went, that took place with money that was sent back to citizens of the United States, there really was a big boom. We went up by about three million dollars in twenty-one, and then we went up almost by another three million, three million in twenty-three, and then you'll see after that, we've kind of leveled off again and before that. So, those were unusual growth periods. The good news is that we haven't dropped back. We've maintained that level, but we are seeing more moderate increases, and so I think it's just good to kind of see that overall table over the last ten, ten years, see what's been happening to sales tax. And we, we do watch it very closely, and there's something, and it is our largest revenue source, and so it's something in the general fund. This is our disaster recovery fund. This includes interest up until just last month, and you'll see that we have one point eight million in the disaster recovery fund. We did discuss this with the, with the Audit Committee as well. In the past, we've had two different calculations that went into the disaster recovery fund. One was carryovers, and the other one was change in fund balance. As we discussed with the council in September, we made the decision to not move the money into the disaster recovery fund for carryovers. It would have been about seventy-five thousand dollars, but the feeling was is that let's just keep it in our overall general fund balance. It gives us the ability to prepare. It gives us the ability to prepare for disaster as well as other needs. And so that's the decision that's made tonight. We did discuss this with the audit committee, but we, we could move an additional hundred and twenty-one thousand, four thirty-three based on the formula that we've discussed with the council before into the disaster recovery fund, or we could just leave it in general fund for any types of needs that are part of that fund balance of the twenty-four and a half million that we talked about. And so we just would need to get some direction from the council on what you recommend with that. And um, any thoughts while we're, while we're here?
Craig Christensen.
Is this, is this regulated by the state? Is this the fund, the disaster recovery fund that's regulated by the state?
Yeah, it was something that we opted into and decided to do. And we are regulated in the fact that we can't pull the money out unless there is an emergency, you know, a disaster of some sort. But it is there. It's accumulating interest and uh, we're not required to add to it, but we can't take it out for just any reason.
Thank you.
Counselor Bogdan.
So John, my, my personal opinion would be until that sales tax gets back where it needs to be. It probably is best just left in the general fund. And then once that sales tax gets back and they get some of these fees adjusted to where they need to be, then we can start putting it back into that disaster recovery fund. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Counselor Handley.
Yeah, I think I would prefer not to put in it, in it right now, but I, I didn't understand that we had the option year to year to just not put in. I thought we had to change our own, our own law on that. Is that not the case?
No, I think the way it was set up is that we were supposed to bring it to you each year.
I see.
And give you the option of whether you want to or not.
Okay.
And then tell different, our responsibility is to bring it to you and make the decision, but there's nothing in there that, that uh, it requires it.
Yeah.
So, so, so yeah, no, it's not, not automatic.
Didn't we already take a vote? Yeah, didn't we already take a vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks for reminding me. I, yeah, I, um, I mean, that's uh, I'm actually kind of blown away by how much money that has accumulated so quickly. And I'm, I'm worried that with, if we keep putting more there, uh, that's money we won't have access to that uh, we need in the city for other things.
Well, and the positive too, right now with interest rates where they're at, almost a hundred thousand a year is going into interest is adding to it, which is positive as well.
Okay.
Counselor Whipple.
Does money in this disaster recovery fund um, kind of count in our favor when we're looking at bonding?
I don't know if it actually comes up, but I think if they do see that it's, that it is part of our overall fund balance. And uh, if they were to ask, I think they would feel they would feel, they would be, I think it'd be a positive thing for sure. You know, it's not a overall scheme of things. It's not a huge number, but it's still, I think it would be positive.
So this wouldn't some, be something that hurts us too, right? Because these funds are set in this special area, like the decrease to
Yeah, the only thing that it does is that these, this shows up, and I can jump back real fast. Uh, it shows up in the restricted category, okay? You see how we've got seven point two million of restricted? And then our, our assigned is six point one million and then our unassigned is twenty-four. So it shows that's restricted. So what that means is that we're restricted by an outside agency on how we spend it. And so that, that's a little bit of a negative because it doesn't give you the ability to do it for other types of things, but it still does show that the fund balance is there.
Okay. And the last time we talked about this, um, part of the conversation was some question about what's happening at the state level. It sounds like other cities haven't really taken advantage of this opportunity. Is, is there any update on that?
I know that we, and I don't know, Justin, if you've got more information, but the last time that we talked about it and I think we looked back in September, I don't think there's any other cities or entities that are participating in it right now. Are you aware of any, Justin?
No, not aware of any, but I've got a note to follow up with the state and see if there are any. So we can, we can follow up.
All right. I like that, that we have the fund in here or the money in this fund. And I like that it is accruing significant amount of interest. I think that's really good. I'm okay with not adding to it this year and we've already voted on that. The, the only comment I would add to Counselor Bogdan's one is I don't, I, I think where we are on sales tax, it looks like we're kind of leveling off again. So do you expect that we'll kind of be on that plateau for a while?
I don't really know. I, I, I hope not, you know, but we're watching it and uh, as we watch the state as well as the city, you know, we just kind of track it and see. And so a lot of times it just, sales tax goes as the economy goes, you know, and who knows with the, the current set and when twenty twenty-five, we're hopefully all optimistic and things are going to improve and get better. But it's a large of an indicator on that, but uh, we'll have to watch and see.
Yeah, yeah, because looking at the numbers, you had like this very gradual increase and then we had to jump up and now it looks like we've leveled again.
Yeah.
So.
That COVID was a really unique thing, you know, and so um, don't think, hopefully we're not going to have another COVID experience, but but maybe there'll be some things in the economy that will spike things and we'll, we'll see, we'll start seeing some larger improvements than we've had in the past year.
For the budget next year, will you be projecting sales tax revenue to be basically flat as you're kind of running those numbers?
We've got a little time. Uh, as we get more information, we'll look at that information and see what it's looking like and what it's trending. But we'll just, and we'll try to get some feedback from the state and some of their projections. And so we'll, we'll look at it and be reviewing it very closely and see. And so what we try to do is not be overly pessimistic, but not overly optimistic. And so we'll be, we'll be balancing that out.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, I just have one more slide I wanted to talk about. And this, this is a little bit small. Hopefully you can see it, but this is called the legal debt margin. And this is in the statistical section towards the back of the book. What this does is it takes your, a debt limit, which is based on a certain percentage of the overall property values in the city. And then it multiplies that by a percentage. And right now our debt limit, our current debt is about eighty million, which consists of two things. And this is just talking about general obligation debt. It's talking about our city hall bonds as well as our rec center bonds. And then with a limit of six hundred and forty-one million, we're eighty. And so based on our overall limitations based on our debt, we are only twelve point four two percent of what we could issue. And so there's a balance of five hundred and sixty-one million. That doesn't mean we're going to go borrow for that, but it does show that uh, I think we're being prudent and not trying to borrow for everything we see. We try to be prudent and do what we can. And so I think it's just kind of a good measure to be able to see it. And it kind of shows it in the graph where the seventy-nine millions in the blue and then the balance is in the red. So I, I just mentioned that as a one of the, an example of one of the statistical section pages in the back.
Thanks, John.
Okay, with that, I will, any other questions for me?
Any other questions for John? Counselor Garrett.
Just to thank you, John and Kelsey also for your work in putting this report together. The unassigned fund, which you reported at a fairly healthy twenty-four million, is that the one also that caps out at um, thirty million in terms of what we are allowed to have in an unassigned fund?
So it's interesting, the state's calculation is, and when I showed those percentages earlier, we were thirty-three percent. They actually take assigned and unassigned and they combine those two for the percentage.
Okay.
And I think one of the reasons that they do that is because the assigned number, which is our carryover, our, our carryovers at the end of the year is something that we internally put upon ourselves. And so they feel like there's still some control in that. And so they include that. So we're, we are at the thirty-three percent right now, just below that.
Okay.
And that's those two numbers combined.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
And this is the auditor. If you could just introduce yourself, please.
Yes, I, I am the auditor. Uh, my name is Jeff Miles. I'm with the firm, uh, HBME. We're located in Bountiful, Utah. Uh, I think John did a great job summarizing the important financial information. Um, as he mentioned last week, we have, I guess it was two weeks ago now, we had a great uh, conversation with the audit committee, um, which I think is a great resource um, for the city to kind of have a subcommittee that is monitoring what we're doing as auditors. And we had a great uh, discussion in, in detail of, of these financial statements. As John said, this, this book really belongs to the city. Uh, we, we represent three pages of this entire document, which includes our opinion on the financial statements. Um, and I'm just going to read uh, one paragraph from that. It says, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of Provo City Corporation as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, so we do give a clean opinion on the financial statements of the city. Um, we will be issuing a separate compliance packet later this week uh, with about state compliance and internal controls. Uh, for state compliance, we didn't have any findings. And internal controls, we did not identify any significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. Um, I think it's a testament to uh, the finance team. Um, since uh, Kelsey's been the budget officer and she's kind of our main point of contact for the audit. You know, it was, it was a big undertaking for her when she took on that role, I think probably four or five years ago. And any chair she's been in it, we've been been having less proposed audit adjustments. I think that's, that's her growing into that role and, and really excelling in, in that function for the city. Um, so with that, any questions from city council at this time?
Any questions? No, thank you so much.
And then just, we will, we are currently working on the federal single audit, you know, for uh, grant money. The only uh, grant we're testing this year is city still has some ARPA COVID-related funds. And that's the or mostly through that audit and, and we'll have a final report for that for you in January.
Excellent. Thank you. We will reiterate your strong words for Kelsey. We know we're grateful to have her. She's awesome. And just for the public's information, the finance committee is something the council put together. That includes um, a council member, some council staff, but mostly citizens. So we pick citizens from the community to have on this finance committee to help um, just watch things and have a third set of eyes. All right. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item is presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to ten minutes. At this time, up to fifteen minutes have been set aside for open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific, specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by saying your name and your city of residence. You'll have two minutes to speak. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right, we'll move on to an implied motion on a resolution consenting to the mayor's reappointment or appointment of individuals to various boards and commissions. It's presented by Mayor Michelle Guffusi.
Thank you, Chair McKay. Um, I am recommending the following appointment to Provo's library board as indicated below and submit this for the council's advice and consent. Elliot Wilcox. Elliot has served as a librarian, library administrator, nonprofit leader in an administrative position in a higher, in higher education. He understands the role of city boards and library policies and recognizes the importance of building relationships within the community. Elliot also has extensive experience in grant writing, demonstrating his ability to secure resources and support. I am recommending Elliot be appointed to a three-year term on the library board ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
All right, thank you. We will open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on that appointment? All right, council discussion. Any council discussion on the item? All right, we will do a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
So that passes seven oh. Next implied motion on a resolution approving thirty thousand budget allocation from the general fund to the police department to fund the police language incentive program. This will be presented by the chief, Troy Beebe.
Thank you, counsel. Um, we, we discussed this in a work session. Uh, we're proposing that we move forward with uh, incentivizing our officers for um, their talents and their extra work.
Great. Thanks, chief. Any questions for chief? Counselor Handley.
Um, I just wanted to make a comment. I did reach out to some of the specialists at BYU that I think had been in contact with one of your officers about this. And they did mention to me that it's worth, I think this program's worth trying. They said if you've, you know, if you find that it's not, it's not designed to emphasize as much the oral skills. Um, and if it turns, but it is more cost-effective than some of the other tests. Um, but I just thought I'd mention that to you and to the rest of the council that there, there are other options if we decide this doesn't look like it's as effective as we want it to be. Um, and we can obviously look at the price differences if we get to that point. But I just, I just wanted to get an answer to that because someone had brought it up in an email to us and I was curious about it.
Thank you.
Any other? Counselor Christensen.
I just wanted to say thank you for making this a priority. This is so important. We need to be communicating with all of our citizens and delighted you're doing it.
Thank you.
Counselor Bogdan.
I think mine's more for John. Do we have any, I mean, it's, it's a nominal amount, but do we have any worries about covering this perpetually year after year after year? Is that something that as we go into budget season, we're going to have to worry about?
Well, I think each year it's always a challenge. Um, and uh, but I think it's all about budget priorities and what we feel like is most important. And uh, if this is something that's the, the council feels is very important and will serve a need based on the chief's recommendation, then I think we just make it a priority and, and I think we could potentially balance it, but it, but it's always difficult, but we, we try it away and, and approve things that the council feels are priorities.
Thanks, John. All right, thank you, chief. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, council discussion, any just? Oh, sorry, Lynn. You just come up to the pulpit and give us your name and your city of residence, please.
Hi, I'm Lynn Sorensen. I'm the chair in the Pleasant View neighborhood or the representative to District One Board. And I'm the one that sent the email that you mentioned. Um, I am also thrilled as Councilman Christensen said that we're having this discussion and that we're looking ahead to how those who speak Spanish in our community committee, they are served by the police department. Uh, one of the ways that I've seen in the past, having been a Spanish speaker for over fifty years and had lots of connections with Spanish-speaking communities, is that the, the best way to have a police officer who speaks Spanish is to hire a native speaker. And I would love to see this kind of money go as a signing bonus to hire a native speaker of Spanish for our police department. I'm the one that raised the question about this particular test. I don't think we need to find the test failing first. I can easily see that it's going to fail in what we need for police officers, and that is to speak Spanish. The test does not measure speaking ability. And there are many, many tests that do measure speaking ability. So if there's going to be a test included, whether it's free or costs money, it certainly needs to measure whether a person can speak Spanish. They have really no need to read Spanish or to recite grammar rules, but they need to speak Spanish. So those are my thoughts on the subject.
Thank you. Any council discussion? All right, we'll move ahead on a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
This passes seven oh. Next implied motion on a resolution approving an amendment to the current interlocal cooperation between Provo City, Utah- Utah County, and other local municipalities for the law enforcement program known as the Utah County Major Crime Task Force. This will also be presented by Chief Beebe.
Again, I think this was well well presented in the the work meeting. This is it really just does talk a bit about a inflation and just basic restructuring of a portion of this agreement that talks about the legalities when it comes to to when it comes to claims and those things. That's that's what the the basis of it is, and that's all.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief while we have him up here? All right, thank you. We'll like to open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, seeing no public comment, we will go to council discussion. Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll go to a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. Next, an implied motion on a resolution appropriating one hundred and twenty-two thousand in the airport fund for the addition of two full-time positions. This will be presented by Brian Torgason, the Airport Director.
Good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here again. This was well presented, at least I think in the work session. But we'll go through it rather quickly tonight for those who are are viewing and care to to comment. So a lot of things are happening at the airport, as you all know. This was this map is already outdated since we since we visited. Breeze just announced another nonstop destination taking us to sixteen. So add San Bernardino to this map. And they will begin that that flight just after the the new year. November was a historic month for us at the airport. Once again, our busiest month ever. We put just over eighty-one thousand passengers through the terminal building in November. And so we're excited about that. Things continue to to climb and to grow and we have, I'm sure you've seen some of our social media posts. We have a temporary gate five that's ready for operation at the airport, and we've had some fun with that. So hopefully you've seen that on our social media posts. Again, just just a history of what our employment numbers have done. And again, for those who are viewing at home, employment is a term for passengers boarding an aircraft in Provo. Total passengers is roughly double the employment numbers. And the the background of this image is what was anticipated by in our master plan that was completed in two thousand nineteen. And what we might expect with the completion of a new terminal building. We've reached those levels that were anticipated to occur in twenty thirty-five, and we did that in just two years after completing the new terminal, so twelve years ahead of have schedule. So this is again, we've got October and November added to this chart, which you'll see if it were on this chart would show those as being the two of the highest months implements that we've had at the new terminal building. One note there, we are the fastest-growing commercial service airport in the entire country at the moment. At least we've we've doubled passengers in each of the last two years. Twenty twenty-four is not quite as significant just because we are at capacity. And we've talked about process of of expanding the terminal and providing more opportunities for airline partners. And we have we have received indication that our our current partners are planning to provide expansion in the next in the next year with more flights being offered. We've talked a lot about this slide in the past and our requirement for firefighting at the airport. We really appreciate our firefighters and the fire department to support us in this effort. And our ARF index requirement, which is completely based off of length of aircraft, which again, we've talked about how strange a metric that is, but and then the number of departures. We are currently right on that line of of being required to provide ARF index C service at the airport, which means an additional vehicle as well as additional staffing. And so in order to cover that staffing, as you know, we've we've cross-trained our operations staff. And we have three full-time captains at the airport who provide the professional background and an oversight of the firefighting effort. But then our operations staff who are already on shift are covering a second position there to avoid overtime from our firefighters so that we can regulate our budget a little bit better and and be a little bit more efficient in how we provide that. Our operations staffing, which we have an operations staff which is separate from from the administrative staff, I guess you could call it. And so the request is for two operations specialists to help provide coverage at the airport. And as we mentioned in the work meeting, we we found that three operations staff is needed at airport on the airport at all times, and currently we're not quite there. And then and then we are covering eight ARF shifts a week. In the month of December, we've we've gone away from that just because we don't know when it's going to snow. We had anticipated snow in December, and so we wanted to make sure our our operations staff was available to help plow snow. And so we we asked the fire department to cover all ARF shifts in December, so. But but normally we would have eight R shifts a week and again, so that we can mitigate the impact to our budget with firefighters working overtime shifts. So again, we're we're about it shows that if you figure all of those requirements out, we're about fourteen and a quarter full-time operations employee equivalent. And right now we have seven full-time positions as well as five part-time in operations. Again, we have other part-time and full-time positions in managing and administrative staff, for example. But so our request is for two additional full-time operations employees. And says to cover the last seven months of the fiscal year, I think we're now to six months of the fiscal year, so that impact will be even less. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks. Any questions? All right, thank you so much. Thanks, Brian. Any public comment on this item? Should be noted, this is not coming out of the general fund. It is coming out of the airport fund. So that's good. All right, council discussion. Any discussion on this item? All right, well, Counselor Whipple.
I just wanted to reiterate one of the points that we'd had in the earlier discussion is that the airport is asking for fewer employees than what they actually need right now. They're being very cautious and making sure that they don't commit more resources than is actually warranted. I'm still a little bit concerned about them burning out, especially once our director has to be plowing the snow off of the runway. But I appreciate this is a very cautious fiscal approach to make sure that we don't overcommit resources and that we we kind of manage the the work level so that we aren't getting people burned out. And I fully expect that as the airport operations continue to grow and we get more implements and there are more demands on it, that you will be back and asking for more full-time employees, but that your airport fund will have generated the revenue necessary to pay for them. So thank you.
Counselor Christensen.
Careful fiscal growth in a hyper-growth environment is tricky. And I get a chance to serve on the airport board and just wanted to vouch for the great work that this team is doing. It's it really is difficult to grow as fast as they are and to keep things within fiscal control. And I just again applaud how careful you've been. So thanks for your good work.
All right, next we'll do a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
So that passes seven oh. Next, implied motion on a resolution regarding a substantial amendment for home ARP funding change. And this will be presented by Melissa McNally.
Good evening. The the resolution and public comment for this evening is on our home ARP funds. And for those that aren't aware, the home ARP is a special one-time grant from HUD to help people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. And in October of two thousand twenty-three, funding allocations were made and approved by council. And one of our grantees has found that they feel like they would better serve their their clients if they had some of their funding moved from tenant-based rental assistance into supportive services. So they have asked that we move five hundred, five hundred thousand of their funding that is currently in tenant-based rental assistance into supportive services, which brings their balance in the TBRA to four hundred and twenty thousand and supportive services up to six hundred and twenty thousand. And are there any questions about any of that? Sorry.
I I think that makes sense. Like, I like it that they ask for it, right? They know what their constituents need and what is the best use of that money. So it seems appropriate to me and I trust them. But any questions for Melissa? Counselor Bogdan.
And actually, I'm I'm more curious on the explanation because it seems to me like if we're paying rental assistance, that's keeping people in their homes away from homelessness, right?
Right.
Which is what I'm thinking this is what it's supposed to be. And then the supportive services is more like childcare.
It could be. Supportive services is is a lot more broad. They can do a lot more. And one of the things specifically that they're able to do with the supportive services is do like one-time payments for. So if a family is looking at at homelessness, if they don't make a couple rental payments or they're behind, then the supportive services funding is able to step in and do a one-time payment for that, whereas tenant-based rental assistance is for ongoing.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So that's what they're seeing more need of is maybe two or three payments, mortgage payments rather than
Right.
perpetual paying.
Right. And it's not. And it wouldn't be for mortgage payments. It would be like rental assistance and and things like that. Yes.
Thanks, Melissa, for that explanation. I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Melissa? All right, thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
We will go to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, any more council discussion? All right, we'll vote on the implied motion. Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Did I vote? Counselor McKay, yes. That's seven oh. All right, next implied motion ordinance regarding the Northeast Neighborhood Plan approval. And this will be presented by Jessica Denique, our planner.
Thank you, councilors. Today we are discussing the Northeast Neighborhood Plan and adopting this as an appendix to the general plan. Just waiting for my slides. No, that's the plan as a whole. There's some slides that should go with it. Yeah, we're going to go through the whole document. Everybody buckle up. We're here all night. Well, just just to start, we do have some members of our advisory committee here, and I just want to give them a shout out because we really could not have done it without them. So Nick, Kynan, Jenny, Bonnie are here. Love it. And Angela, Todd, Suzanne, and Hiram, who aren't here, we're very grateful for the work that they put into this plan. It really wouldn't have been the same without their insights, and we appreciate how much they care for this community. And now my slides are here. So the the Northeast Neighborhood Plan started with our usual planning process. It's working with our advisory committee and then going through the public presentation process. In our sessions with our advisory committee, we came up with these eight objectives that we wanted the plan to accomplish. So we'll run through most of these objectives pretty quickly. The first objective is just to understand the needs and the desires for land use and development, and that was a collaboration of the general plan goals and the neighborhood priorities and finding areas where they are working together and finding areas where we could compromise to make sure that this is in in line with the general plan and with the neighborhood that these residents want to live in. Our second objective is where we spent a majority of our time is going over the existing land use and coming up with areas that propose future land use and future possible development. As you see, we have our future land use map here. We're proposing some medium-density residential, some mixed-use, some high-density residential directly across from the shops at the Riverwoods. And then everything else is predominantly single-family or LDR. And then our annexation area is agriculture or residential agriculture. One thing that we did differently is we used a hatching tool to show, and I'll go back to the map for this, just to show there are agricultural areas that are still being used as agriculture. Foreseeable future will be used as agriculture, and the committee wanted to make sure those uses felt welcome while still creating a vision for what development should go there if those areas were sold. So that's why we have the cross-hatching tool. Our next objective was to identify ways to highlight this area as an important gateway to the city. The neighbors here, the residents here are very proud of where they live in, and it should be featured. It is in our gateways plan. It hosts many important gateways. So we went through and created suggestions for future code requirement for gateways and design corridors with the streets that the general plan proposed as future design corridors. Another important objective was to evaluate the annexation area. As part of this process, we sent out a survey to the property owners in the unannexed land to get their feedback. The general feedback we received was that people were uncertain of the timeline that they wanted to annex in. Taking that and discussing with our advisory committee, we came up with the suggestion of removing federal lands from our annexation area as well as the Springdale community. And that was including discussions with Public Works because servicing these areas was not feasible. Another key issue and important priority for the Northeast Neighborhoods was to preserve the canyon and to provide education for future development and developers. So we have our objective five, which is identifying opportunities and restrictions with development, and we came up with our chapter five of the whole plan, which goes into detail about slope, critical hillside, transferable development rights, how they can develop safely and sustainably. Another thing that we focus on is trails and recreational opportunities. We highlight the hillsides and canyons plan and the Provo and Provo foothills trail master plan to show how recreation can be sustainable in this canyon for many generations to come. Another important objective is obviously safety for transit. We had a lot of discussions with our transportation engineer, Vern, about how we could make these safer. We brought up missing speed limit signs, and then the plan is also suggesting other things like trail crossing signage and and general improvements that just make transportation safer for all methods of transportation. So that brings us to the implementation table. We believe that by accomplishing these goals, we're bringing the plan from the page to physical reality. A lot of these goals cover all three phases because there are items that are either required to wait on development to happen or items that should be consistently reviewed, such as hazard maps. Public feedback from the Northeast, from posting the Northeast Neighborhood Plans on Open City Hall has include concerns about accessory dwelling units, which we mentioned, but we're not proposing any changes to or about. And then then design corridor requirements, which we have language into address. Some of the main concerns recently raised were about the annexation plan and unannexed areas. We came to those conclusions mostly based on survey results. And then the placement of density at this plan, we did strive to keep. And then the placement of density at this plan, we did strive to keep anything higher density on University Avenue. So it wasn't creeping into those single-family neighborhoods that are so important. And then feedback from the Planning Commission addressed a lack of housing diversity and then a lack of language for small-scale infill development. One of the main reasons that we weren't proposing a lot of diversity and density along University Avenue is just that it is built out and not ready for redevelopment at this point. But when a new Northeast Neighborhood Plan comes to you, I'm sure their future land use will look very different than ours. And just to kind of show, here's the current land use. You can see that we do have a decent amount of diversity in there between different types of agriculture, duplexes or single-family attached, single-family detached, and then along University Avenue and adjacent to the Riverwoods is where you'll see a lot of our mixed-use and our apartment complexes where our higher density should be located. And then our future land use is just filling in some of those gaps for providing additional LDR zones for things like single-family attached. And then some higher density, again, along University Avenue and near the shops at the Riverwoods.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jessica? Counselor Garrett?
In the work session, Jessica, you mentioned that each phase represents approximately five years.
Correct.
So possibly a rollout of about 15 years then on this plan. Helpful to know. Also, on the survey tool that you use to inquire about property owned by property owners who are on land currently, that's currently county property. You mentioned that most did not know at what point they'd want to annex into Provo. Can we conclude that all want to at some point? Or were there some who said, I want to remain county property?
We got one survey respondent who was a definitive no. Some of this land has actually changed ownership just in the last few months and are working towards an annexation petition. So that will be brought to you at some point. And then, yes, a majority of the additional owners were uncertain or did not respond.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Jessica? Okay. Thanks, Jessica. All right. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? You seem to come to the pulpit and say your name and your city of residence, please.
Hey, guys. I'm Nick Kirkham. I'm in the Northeast Neighborhoods here in Provo. Just a quick special thanks to our wonderful gals here that were very helpful. And with the TAC Committee and all of us, we worked really hard. And we're just urging you to please pass this plan. I think it's going to be a a good step and a good direction for the city. I'm personally 28 years old and so I'm, I'm definitely going to be seeing these changes a little bit more than some of the older folks that are around here in this room. No offense, guys, but so anyways, thank you so much. Please pass the plan.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Kynan Griffin. I was, I'm a resident of Provo. I live in the Northeast Neighborhood. I also run my business out of there, out of the Riverwoods. I just want to speak out in support of this plan. I was on the committee too, and I just want to say that it was a very diverse committee. We had young, single homeowners, students, all the way through to longtime agricultural business owners in the area. And I think when we speak about diversity of housing, I think there's a tendency to say, oh, we need more high-density or we need more apartments in an area. We looked at preserving our neighborhood's feel and, and what drew us to there. And the residential agricultural zones in this neighborhood are part of the appeal and part of the diversity, which has sadly disappeared from most of Utah County. And so I asked the city council to take that into consideration too, that diversity also includes open spaces, residential, agricultural, and even the full-on agriculture we have going up on the hillsides there. So thank you for consideration and please support the plan.
Good evening. First of all, I'm Marion Monahan. I'm on the board of this district and also a resident, obviously, of Provo. First of all, thank you. You have put in a very long day and it's not over yet. I don't think anybody appreciates all the time that you put into to helping us decide what's best for everyone in the city. Secondly, thank you for making the minor change in the, well, it wasn't minor to us, but it will help to make certain that, that the, we use the maps that are there rather than just text. I also hope that in the near future, if you recall, this district makes up eight neighborhoods, but only three were included in this plan. So hopefully it'll just blanket over to the entire district because I believe most of the residents in the other neighborhoods feel excellent feelings about this plan. And it does, it pretty well covers what all the other neighborhoods need and want. So thank you very much for considering that as well as, as passing this, this plan.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Matt Wheelwright. I'm also a resident of, very close to the shops at Riverwoods and on the District One Board. I would like to commend both the city staff and the residents who participate on the committee. This is a comprehensive plan that takes a lot of time and effort on both parties' part. I've been a developer over the years, built homes in California and locally. I have a degree in urban design. This is a very well-done plan. So I am in full support. I think it does a very nice job of merging both the history and a very strategic approach to the, to the future in a constructive way that I think will help maintain the, the feelings and the kind of sentiment of the community and the goals of the community and the people who live there, while also empowering some new things and some opportunities, which having seen them close hand, very from my back window, there's a lot of higher density. I think it's in the right place. I'm in support of the loss. I was in support when they came, not of five stories, but of three stories. And that's what they built and it looks great. And we have great neighbors and I enjoy having them around. A couple of just ideas that I would like to, I guess, plant in the head as I've thought about this and, and thought about what the Planning Commission's feedback was. One is there's a theory in housing and urban design called the housing ladder that is a wonderful theory that applies directly to what we're talking about. We need all kinds of housing to join the market. So people have a choice about where they want to live and how they want to move both up and down. People sometimes get to the point in their life where they say, hey, I'm done with this house. I want to go down the ladder. And, and it's by giving everybody everything, and it doesn't have to be just up to certain neighborhood. But across Provo, across Utah County, we need all of this so that people have that choice. And I think this plan actually does that quite well. The other thing I've noticed in my last 11 seconds is that we have a lot of vacancy. We have a lot of second homes. We have commercial properties that are vacant. I think we need to combat that before we do tune.
Thank you. Come on up.
Well, I wasn't quite sure if it was my turn or not, but anyway, I'm a resident of Garden Villa and my wife and I have lived there for the last 10 years.
Okay. We need your name, please.
My name is Arthur Art Newman. So I'm a building contractor and I've been a building contractor for the last 40 years in Utah County. And I, I just can't help but, to address some of the concerns that we have, especially those people living in Garden Villa. I think that's one of the oldest condominium communities in Provo, one of the first as a matter of fact. And we're really concerned. I mean, if this, we have this hill next to us and I think if that's part of the proposal we're making, is that, is that correct? Am I correct?
You're at the next item. Do you want to speak, wait until speak to the next item that's about that hundred?
Am I, am I jumping the gun?
You're jumping the gun.
Oh, I apologize.
But I will make sure you come up at the next one. Okay. Thank you.
I'm Jenny Smith. I live in the Northeast Neighborhoods and I was on the TAC Committee. And at urging of one of my neighbors, she said, there's something obvious you should say. So boots on the ground, you see, as the neighbors, you see something that you might not see on your, on your, you know, the maps. And so the, there's a lot of, if you look on the map, there's a lot of RA and ag ground, you know, in our, in our neighborhood. And most of it, so this is what I'm trying to explain. So the big chunk of that is the hills, properties under the hillsides overlay, critical hillsides overlay because of slopes and geologic hazards. And so that should be an RA. And, and it should be, you know, carefully planned when the time comes. The other chunk, of course, is largely land that has been traditionally used as agricultural production and lifestyle land and is currently used that as well. I'm aware that to many developers, the plant, the value of agriculture land is a holding place for property yet to be developed. Members of the TAC saw it differently and respected the value of agriculture and those who own agriculturally zoned properties in our neighborhood, which is reflected in our recommendation for the RA. If owners of ag lands choose in the future to develop their land, they will need to go through the rezon process already in place. I bring it before you for approval. The TAC members believe that they should not feel that the value of their agriculture production and lifestyle is devalued or threatened by encroachment from a neighborhood plan that would prescribe that the only alternative would be create a high-density island in their, in their neighborhood. So having it remain as RA as long as people choose to use it that way is the most appropriate and respectful proposal. I'm an owner of an agriculture land in the neighborhood and a member of a farming family. We're one of a dozen commercial agriculture enterprises in this, this area. But people don't know that. But anyway, we, we appreciate you.
Thanks, Jenny. Any other comments for this one?
Bonnie Marl, Northeast Area. I was on the TAC. I have two statements from Laura Cavanilla, who is a former city council person, city councilwoman, and also Stan. And let me read Laura Cavanilla's first. I like, this is from Laura Cavanilla, Northeast Area. She lives in this neighborhood. I like that the plan included keeping open spaces well as needed infrastructure, especially regarding transportation avenues. It's still possible to keep those busy roads and facilitate traffic while having these corridors bounded by a green space where possible. It's important to keep our city beautiful and a wonderful place to live. And then this is from Stan Jensen. He is on the District One Board. District One is over this area. Stan Jensen, Vice Chair on District One Executive Board. I favor Provo City Council's adoption of the Northeast Area Plan. This plan is good for the residents and for Provo. The content and principles set forth will help preserve and improve our community and its future development. I also applaud the process followed to craft this plan, which included substantial input from the citizens, most directly and powerfully impacted by the plan and related government decisions. I urge adoption of this plan and support further efforts to complete similar area plans following this type of meaningful participation by residents in our community. And I just want to back that up with, I'm so thrilled. We finally made it to the finish line and we're here tonight. And I know our whole Northeast Area is thrilled and we are so excited to finally have this done after so many years. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. All right. Any more comment for this item?
My name is Scott Smith. We live at 5440 North Canyon Road. Most of the council here would be familiar with our farm and we thank you for welcoming us into the city, the first five acres of our 51 in, in the city. And can't thank you enough. That's a, that's a goal. And you've helped us accomplish a lot of things as, with our goals with the farm. I'm a fifth-generation farmer on this property. My great-great-grandfather and grandmother homesteaded it. And I have farmed with the third and fourth generation and I am now teaching the fifth and the sixth, seventh, or the sixth and seventh generation. And farming is, is a difficult task. I think the best environmentalists that I've known would have been my grandfather or my dad. Your conservation is from the get-go. You have a stewardship with the land. If you overdo one balance or the other, it's out of balance. You're not farming for very long. So in the truest sense of the word, I think ag people, whether they're fruit ranchers or livestock men, like my relatives in the south end of this valley, the south end of Provo, the stubs. And I have read and heard a lot about what we're talking about here tonight. And I applaud the plan and maybe just leave you with one thought that if every, everybody doesn't get what they want, we'd like to work with developers where we can. But in the, in the decision process, there probably isn't a perfect decision here. Only intelligent choices. And I'd just like to leave you with that. And thank the council for all of your hard work on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Well, I like that we ended that on such a great quote. All right. We'll move it to council discussion. Any council discussion on this item? Counselor Christensen?
Well, this is a, this is a big day. This is something that, that my neighbors have been looking forward to for a long time. I first got involved in the city because this plan wasn't in place. And this goes back to 2019. And many of the people who are here tonight were part of making sure that we helped to get a plan together. And so to see it finally come together, I don't know if you've ever attended these meetings, but they're intense. You're, you're right. There are only intelligent choices. There's lots of trade-offs. The great work by the staff, the, the commendable work by neighbors who are trying to craft a vision of our neighborhoods. Because in Provo, we're not looking to like mimeograph and make everything the same. What we want is diversity. I love the diversity of this plan. I love the diversity of the thinking here. I love the fact that, you know, when we talk about, you know, Provo, welcome home, that Sherwood Hills feels like home to me. It's different than Joaquin. I lived in Joaquin. I love Joaquin. And I happen to live in Sherwood Hills right now, but they're not the same. And I love the fact that as a city, we can put together a general plan that represents the different kinds of perspectives. Matt, I love your idea of the, of the ladder. Because you're right, we do need up and down. We need variety of different things. I think this plan takes into account high density in the right kind of places, along those transportation corridors, in the strategic spots, the whole Ryan Smith development, which is bringing a couple of hundred, you know, townhomes online. I, I just think it's the right kind of balance. And again, kudos to, to the staff who've been very patient, very professional in this process and neighbors who care a great deal about this wonderful, wonderful city and this great neighborhood.
Any other public comment? All right. Counselor Whipple? Counselor Bogdan?
I just wanted just to make sure we did get those changes put into the plan, correct?
Yes, we did those this afternoon and we've emailed a copy to Michael and Malia. So those changes that were discussed at work session have been made.
Thank you so much, Jessica. Counselor Whipple?
So last month in our, our middle of November meeting, there was a gentleman who said he was on the plan, who we were talking about AD use and he's like, well, we're supportive of AD use. Look at our plan. Looking at this plan, it's, it's neutral on AD use. That's not the same as being supportive of having AD use in this area. That's not the same as being supportive of having ADUs in this area. And because of that, I can see why the Planning Commission had some reservations about it. Because several times in the general plan, it says that we will promote infill, that we will do the small lot development, that we, you know, we want to, to look at these options to incorporate a little bit more housing into our single-family neighborhoods without changing the character of those neighborhoods. Um, and because the, the language regarding ADUs or smaller lots is so very neutral, I don't see that it is promoting that part of the, the general plan. So I'm, I'm saying this just to know why Planning Commission, I think, made those, those um, objections to it. And, and to say that I, I do agree that this, this neutrality is not in favor of it despite what we heard in the public comment at that, that meeting at the, or at the previous council meeting on this. That said, I um, I like that you're, you're showing areas where you do see higher density as being appropriate. And I recognize that another one of our general plan priorities is to protect existing single-family neighborhoods. And I think that you have, have taken that party and run with it, right? You're, you're really doing that. Um, I, I would have liked, you know, a little bit more language saying, you know, that you would be in favor of, of doing that. But I don't think you are in favor of allowing ADUs in your neighborhoods. Some of you are? Okay. So that is true. That is a representation of the advisory committee that you would be in favor. The, the question then that maybe I, I have for an advisory committee member or perhaps for Jessica who sat in on all these conversations is, is that favorable feeling towards ADU something where you would want individual property owners to seek that spot zoning, that little zone re-change because we no longer have the pathways? Or do you think that there is kind of little clumps or district or, you know, neighborhood-wide areas where it would be appropriate to add that ADU thing? Because like I say, having read this document, I don't see that support coming through. So if there is support for it, I, I want to know what the level of support is. All right, Jessica, it's you.
Um, it was discussed uh, in a lot of our uh, committee meetings that we had. Um, generally speaking, the committee did give a, a positive recommendation on ADUs. Um, I think one of the reasons that we as, as staff held back on some of the language is because we weren't sure about what the process would be to establish ADUs, um, as we knew that this was something that council was discussing, discussing. Um, so we kind of kept our language pretty neutral in that, in that sense. Uh, we also received some feedback that maybe not everyone in the neighborhood was as open to that concept as our wonderful committee. So that's where our language came in as more neutral to the approach, but we wanted it in there so that people knew it was an option that existed.
Okay, I think I understand better now. So the neutrality is because you weren't sure what this group of people were going to be doing. Um, but you had a sense that that actually would be a good way to protect your single-family neighborhoods and address these other needs. Okay. Thank you. Because that was, was something that was causing some confusion for me and there wasn't time to ask about it in the work meeting because we were running, while we were enjoying this conversation, let's be honest. Um, since the council has acted on the special use pathway and has revoked that, the only way to get the ADUs right now is to ask for a zone change or for a clump of you to seek for, for that change. Based on the conversations that the TAC had, do you think there are areas that would want to seek that kind of change or?
Um, I can't speak to groups uh, of properties as a whole. Again, based on our conversations with our committee, they were in favor of having that option made known. Um, I don't know if they can all speak to knowing offhand of ten or so neighbors that would be interested in going through the legislative process of changing that. Um,
So one other option, because we're talking about potential future land use, is it could be an option that in this plan, we would, we would designate this area as having like the S overlay, saying that in the future, this would be an area that would be appropriate to change the zoning to have ADUs. Did a conversation about that kind of thing occur?
Uh, no, I don't believe we ever had a conversation about doing a, an overlay as part of a, a future land use where should code change to allow that kind of thing to happen, it be included in our future land use map?
So because there weren't conversations, we can't say if we know if the support goes quite that far. I have a, a shake. Support does not go that far. Bonnie, could you please come up?
Hi. As far as the ADUs go, we did not want to go behind the council's back when you were trying to make very serious decision about the ADU that was going on simultaneously. And so that's why our wonderful staff rode it up the way that they did. Are ADUs something that people are interested in our neighborhood? Absolutely. All you have to do is go up there and you can see it. Um, need I say more? Can we get groups of it? I'm sure we can. And so I talked with uh, Sharon Memmott, who's the District One Chair. She's our chair. And we uh, decided, as we had discussed in work council, in work meeting with the council today, that there are different tweaks that we need to address um, as we move forward. And in January, District One is looking at that as well as the other little minor tree, tweaks. But we very much wanted this plan to be approved tonight so that we can move forward and make it even better in the future.
Okay. Yeah, I would say that the, the only hesitation I have right now is the neutrality of the current written document doesn't reflect the positive attitude that I'm seeing on, on the ADU thing. And because it's neutral, I think it could just as easily be used to oppose applications for that little change in zoning or for ADUs. And so that, that's just where I'm held up is because it, it sounds like it doesn't necessarily reflect what you wanted on that particular thing.
I think if you were in our neighborhood, you would know that it would be a tool that would be used in the future.
All right.
But we, again, wanted to respect council and not act like we were trying to tip an apple cart.
Oh, yeah.
When you were trying to make your decisions for the city.
Okay.
So we would approach you again, starting in January, when we start reviewing through this plan and addressing those issues and present them respectfully, each one of them, including ADUs, at those proper times to move forward.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank all of you for indulging me in these questions.
Counselor Handley.
Um, you can, you can say thanks. Um, I, yeah, I also want to express my gratitude to everyone involved. I um, you know, it's been a, it's been a long road on the council, but um, one of my more uh, challenging moments was uh, a certain development proposal for the foothills in Northeast that many of you will remember that was very concerning and kind of um, uh, necessitated this process. Oh, um, anyway, it's, it's a longer story, but it felt like a, a very long, slow chess game. Where we were as a council trying to do what was right for this area of the city and um, making sure that the foothills uh, were protected. But in the process, that be, it became apparent that we needed a lot more than to just think about that. We needed to think about the whole area in a more comprehensive way and so I'm really grateful uh, to all of you uh, for all the work you've done and, and getting us to this point. Um, I really liked the plan. I read it with uh, great interest and uh, pleasure. Um, and I think, you know, I think I um, had yeah, some hesitancy in ignoring half of the Planning Commission's recommendation. Um, wanted to understand a little bit or better that division on the commission. Um, hearing from, from uh, many citizens, uh, many of you who are here tonight, um, wanting to respect and balance those different perspectives. And Rachel's questioning helped me get some more clarity on this as well. I really liked what um, Matt was saying about um, and his, are you Mindy's brother by any chance? Okay. You, you look a lot like her. So anyway, we're good friends. Sorry, personal aside. Um, I, but that point, um, it really gets to the issue of infill and, and, and so I would agree that the language um, it, it is, is neutral, but I think it sounds like that's the appropriate thing. I, I think, given the fact, I think it's really on us as a council uh, to wrestle with that. And as you saw, maybe if you, if you were really bored, you watch city council meetings, I don't know, but uh, when we had our debate about the um, special uh, permit process, um, there was some discussion about the idea that, you know, broader neighborhoods would still have that option. And so I just want to echo what Rachel was saying and, and, and underscoring Bonnie, what you were saying. If that is something that you want to explore, I think um, that may be the common ground. I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole council, but that was sort of something that was tossed around as a, as a potential common ground for us is the idea that a neighborhood might want to make those kinds of decisions and we'd still like to make that possible, I think, at least speaking for myself. Um, because I do think that helps with that, with those housing options. I mean, that just becomes one m- more point along the way that, that diversifies in a healthy way so that diversity can't just mean different kinds of neighborhoods. It really also has to be within limits. I mean, I'm not in favor of you know, overriding the differences between neighborhoods or types of housing areas in that, in the city. But when you, when you create radically different kinds of neighborhoods uh, in a city with radically different housing types, you end up with other kinds of problems that we don't want to have in Provo. So I think uh, I'm grateful to hear about that. But anyway, I just want to congratulate everybody and express my full support. I intend fully to um, to support the, the proposal tonight.
Any more comments or discussion? All right. We'll do a vote on the implied motion. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh.
I swear.
Oh, boy. Next, implied motion ordinance regarding a zone map amendment from R one eight zone to the MDR zone in order to construct a hundred unit apartment complex building located at two thousand North Canyon Road. And this is the Pleasant View neighborhood. Um, they'll be presented by Nancy Robison.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so for this um, ordinance, uh, Mr. Reynolds is requesting a zone change from R one eight to medium density residential um, at approximately two thousand North Canyon Road. This is an area that's close to BYU and the stadium. There is a significant hill on the parcels of land and it would require removal of the hill. Provo Fire Department has said that that would be a benefit to them, um, just because of the challenges of trying to uh, get up the hill and if there were any fires in that area. Um, allowing the medium density residential, it would allow up to a hundred and sixteen units, but the developer is just proposing a hundred units. Planning Commission heard this item on November thirteen and passed along a positive recommendation for the zone change. Um, comments that were made by the Planning Commission included that it would get rid of problematic terrain and it would also be a good location for uh, medium density residential on a collector road. Um, the del- developer has uh, offered a development agreement and we've discussed things that it would include, including what I just handed to you, that um, landscape bond would be provided should the hill be removed. Uh, sewer facilities are currently insufficient for density higher than the previously approved subdivision plan and new canal placement would be addressed by the canal company and parking would be included in rent. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Thanks so much. Um, any questions? Yes, Counselor Bogdan.
Nancy, thank you so much for putting this together. I think I was the one that asked for this bullet point. So thanks for keeping, Bill, thank you for allowing her to do that. That just helps keep us on track, or me on track, anyway.
Any other questions for Nancy? Oh, great. Does he have a question? That would be public comment, right? So he can talk during public comment. All right. Thanks Nancy. Thanks. It's your turn now for public comment.
Mm-hmm.
Was it art?
Uh, again, I want to apologize for jumping the gun.
No worries.
Anyway, my wife and I have lived in the uh, Garden Village, as I mentioned earlier, uh, condominium complex, which is adjacent to this property, which is being proposed for a major zone change, if I'm correct, to allow higher density. Now, one of the, and I've had, we've, in the past, we have had people in our neighborhood who have gotten up a petition, who were opposed to this approving of this uh, zone change to allow this uh, project to go forward. One of our main concerns is that uh, what's going to happen to our property values and economies that we were now in. A lot of people that uh, my neighbors and friends and people in my ward there are older like myself and uh, live on fixed incomes. We're certainly very concerned about the value of the property that, that's there. And we kind of under the impression that it's not going to help it much. Also, the construction process uh, can be kind of noisy, dusty and uh, I mean, we live at the foot of the hill where they're proposing to make this change. And myself, as I've mentioned, I've been a building contractor in Utah County for over forty years. And um, I've even developed some property myself, but this is kind of a major uh, uh, project. And um, uh, the concern for property values is, is maybe our main concern. And I would like to ask the council, I mean, how is this going to affect taxes? Uh, our taxes on our, our property versus, you know, how's it, how's that going to, you know, you don't want to address that as well? Well, it looks like my time is getting short, so. But anyway, that's our major concern. So I hope that the uh, council would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a hand raised online? All right, we have someone online with their hand raised. If you want to speak, you have two minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Mike Mickelson and I live in the property that is immediately to the east of the proposed development. My property will probably be affected the most out of anybody in the neighborhood and I have some concerns about the uh, about the proposed grade and um, we have, we have irrigation, um, flood irrigation and the proposal that I saw um, runs the, it's, I, I think it was a fifty percent grade all the way up to the property line. We also have a very, well, it's not large, but it's a, it's a very heavy brick and concrete shed that's right on the property line and what I'm most concerned about is, you know, this, this hill has been stable for, you know, hundreds of years. And I'm, I'm a little worried that if we cut that hill off, my shed's going to slough off. And I, I don't see any preparation, checking soil, you know, analysis. Nobody's ever contacted me or come on my property to take soil samples. You know, I've got a hundred and, you know, a hundred and fifty feet of, of property line that's adjacent to this development and they're proposing to cut right up to my fence. And um, I'm a little bit worried with, you know, with the irrigation, we're going to have soil liquefaction issues. And um, I know that special approval is necessary to get, um, you know, to- you know, to, to create a grade this steep. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that. And also our electrical and utility, or our, our electrical and telephone, cable, internet all come up from from Canyon Road. And so does this development plan include, you know, because they're going to take out that power pole. And so does that include fixing the electrical service to my half?
Your two minutes is up, but please feel free, if there's more you want to let us know about that you do, email us.
All right.
Would anyone else like to make a comment? And then I'm going to have Bill Pepperoni address some of these things that have been mentioned.
Evening, Paul Evans in the Pleasant View neighborhood. I guess I'm one of those people who's seen the changes over 30 and 40 years. And but not more than five years ago, we were here with the development at the corner of Canyon Road and Stadium for the Tempanogus Towers apartment complex. And whether or not there'd be owner, owner occupancy, how dense it would be, and particularly how high it was going to be. And a height was arrived at that would allow for the, as you go up the hill in Canyon Road, that you would not keep increasing the heights of buildings, but rather you would make that transition from Tempanogus Towers and the stadium into the residential area. And by allowing this building to go at 45 feet, it dramatically alters that transition that we talked about for Tempanogus Towers with Stadium 150, and then with the apartment complex on the corner 2100 and Canyon Road, which is limited to three stories in an MDR. And so in terms of the long-term vision of how things would unfold development-wise, this does in terms of height represent a significant alteration, not to any written plan, but certainly it was a discussion that was had specifically with Tempanogus Towers. And it's included in the packet of the drawing that Tempanogus Towers developers put in to show that their height would be even across and you'd reach this two-story, you know, 30-foot sort of height at the top of the hill there. And, and so that's one issue. Owner occupancy is another big issue for this area, and that really needs to be addressed in the development agreement. And it'd be nice to have the development agreement chair.
Thanks, Paul.
Chair, can I ask a question to Paul?
Sure.
Paul, are you aware the Tempanogus Towers, if any, or a percentage of those did end up being sold?
No, they're all, they're all leased.
Least rentals. Thank you.
Yeah.
You came just in time.
Just figured out where this was, just in time. So my concern is-
We just need your name and your city of residence.
And what else do you need?
Your city of residence.
Oh, Provo. So my concern is the neighborhood right adjacent to it, which, because this new building will be right up against that Stadium 150, the other apartment complex. So 2100 in the neighborhood there, every evening is absolutely packed with parking because Stadium 150, they, and I did hear, because I've been listening to it as I was coming, I know that the parking is, is included in the rent. My question is, is it sufficient parking for the actual residents that will live there? Because what happens is all of the Stadium 150 people, because it's not included in the rent and it's an additional pass, they all decline and so they pack up 2100. And so my concern would be, is the parking sufficient for the number of units? And not just the number of units, but the number of bedrooms, because we know that it will end up being mostly individuals with cars. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lily Mott. I also live in the Garden Villa community in Provo. Unfortunately, I feel like this has become a bit of a protracted conflict with Mr. Reynolds. There's been public outcry, ongoing public outcry about this development. So we, I respectfully request maintaining the R18 zone designation and denying the MDR designation for several reasons. One is just that the last few homes that have been sold in the Garden Villa community have been sold to investors. I feel like earnest homeowners are being kind of muscled out by all of the MDR requests, the high-density housing over at Rivers Edge. We feel like we're being a little bit overrun by the, by the density requests. We're also very concerned about the impact on parking, as was mentioned, taxes, as was mentioned, water, just the impact to the community. I feel like it is kind of stripping away some, any kind of neighborhood feel to the area and becoming just a haven for high-density, medium-density housing. Also, it has felt a little bit underhanded from the developer to not be coordinating counseling with, with the residents, with the neighborhood. It's been very disheartening to have these ongoing requests and, and to have residents not consulted. It seems to me like this would be short-term gains leading to long-term losses of people who want to live in, in Provo. So that's my comment. Thank you.
I don't even know if I'm allowed to make another comment.
You are, because this is another item.
Matt Wheelwright again. I'm not very well-versed on all the details, but this is a unique site. As a developer, this is awesome. But as a neighborhood, there are a lot of different things going on around it that I can, I can see it on this map. I can't see it there anymore. And just a couple of thoughts on that. One is, because there's a development agreement in play, it opens the opportunity for you to give, get some, a lot of things in return for giving. I think, I don't have an issue with density personally, but it's depends on how it's translated through in massing and height. And in this location, with so many different things right around it, that massing and height matters way more than how many people come and go from the site, in my opinion, because it's on an arterial. And so getting that right and pushing that into the development agreement is your prerogative. And I would say use it wisely.
So you're saying how high the building is?
How high the building is, to me, in my studies, matters way more than how many units. Parking matters in how many units, but it's the height. And so making that height harmonious rather than incongruent with what's around it. And this is weird because you've got stuff up a hill, you've got apartments on one side, you've got single family, you've got a lot to compete with. And traditionally, this kind of zoning depends on, well, what's the predominant use near it? This is weird. There's a lot of uses around it. And so I would say the height is way more important in my mind than the density, because you've got to keep a harmony with what's around it and not make all the neighbors uncomfortable. I think the construction stuff you can figure out. I think the slope is a big issue based on what's happening above, but I think it's manageable. You just got to get it into the development agreement.
Thank you. Any more public comment on this item?
Lynn Sorensen, again, I'm the representative from this neighborhood, Pleasant View. You've heard these concerns about height, and I've heard them a lot from people contacting me and asking me to bring to the attention of the council, the concerns of the people in the neighborhood. Height is one of them. The parking isn't the only issue with cars, it's traffic. The city area there is very traffic-bound already. And the Tim Towers has exacerbated that. And of course, 100 units, we're now talking about 150 cars. So the traffic is a very big issue. And as Ms. Mott pointed out, the neighborhood feel is at risk here. Now, I don't suppose to have spoken with every resident in the neighborhood, but every resident in the neighborhood who has spoken to me about this is opposed to the height, the traffic influx, the timeframe for taking the hill down and all of the disruption and dust and all those kinds of things that it causes. So it's very, very unpopular with the neighborhood. And we would like for neighborhood feelings to be taken into account. I assume that's why we have neighborhoods and representatives and districts and so forth, so that the council will know how neighbors are feeling. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Any other public comment? Now is your chance. Okay, we are going to go to council discussion. Any discussion on this? Oh, and you talked to Bill, yes. Okay, there might be other questions from the comments we heard. Yes, we'll see if you, but I'm interested in the height thing is what I'm wondering compared to the other buildings next to it and compared to the houses behind it and the beginning of the hill behind them.
Okay, I'm going to kind of go in reverse, reverse order, as raised to address those. If I miss one, correct me. First, though, Nancy and I neglected one more bullet point on your list of development agreement conditions, and that is that 100-unit limitation on density. That should be one of those bullet points. Regarding massing and height, that's one of the reasons the staff was supportive of this proposal, because the MDR Zone between the 100-unit limitation offered by the developer and the building height restriction of 45 feet in that zone, we felt like that was appropriate scale and density for this property. The height issue that Mr. Evans is raising, I believe, isn't as if you're on Canyon Road looking directly east at this building finished. I believe his point refers more to moving north from the stadium, moving past Tim Towers and then going north. That's the height he's talking about and how that would be better to move down. I, I think that's, he raises a good point, Mr. Evans usually does. But staff looked at this as a hillside that's 55 or 60 feet tall now and a new building that's-
Okay, how big is the hillside?
55 or 60 feet, I believe. Gordon, if I got that wrong, correct me. But I believe the existing hillside now is 55 to 60 feet. The building height is 45 feet.
So it's going to be below, the building height will be below the homes that will be behind it?
The roof of the building will be below the, that's right.
Below their foundation.
That's right. And that, that's why, that's one of the reasons why staff felt comfortable about this. We saw that kind of a net gain.
Does it go up from looking from the south?
Yes, if you're looking from the south, I believe the height of the building would look like it was going up. Yes, if you're looking from the south towards the north.
So it'll be higher than the building on either side of it?
Yes.
By how much? How much is the height on the buildings on either side?
Buildings to the north, and I think we've heard from some of those owners, those are just two-story townhomes, are they not, Mr. Evans? Aren't those two-story townhomes? So those are 30 feet, maybe? The, I can't remember the height of the apartment buildings just to the south. Those are less than Tim Towers, and I think those are three-story. Is that right?
I'm, I'm looking at Google Earth and it does look like there's three, yeah.
Three stories, yeah.
How much is that normally? How high is three stories?
Uh, we bet that's also about 30 feet, that would you say? Regarding parking.
I'm sorry, Becky Bogdan wants to know how high Tim Towers is.
Tim Towers is five stories, and that was like 50 feet, 55?
Oh, so it would be smaller than that by about five feet or 10, 10?
Five to 10, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So it'll kind of stagger, high, low, high?
Yeah. Regarding parking, and that's always an issue to us, the developer has planned more parking than what is required by code. Significantly more. I can't remember the exact number, but it's like 20 spaces more than what's required. The gentleman who raised the issue about hillside stabilization and having a shed very close to the property line, that's absolutely a very legitimate concern. At this stage of the development review process, we haven't asked for or reviewed soil studies yet. The soil quality is very good for construction, but they're going to have to submit to the engineering department a soil study, and that will give specific recommendations about hillside stabilization. Very careful measures will be taken not to undermine that hillside or cause any sloughing problems. Even when we have very heavy rain, that will be taken into, into account with the soils study and mitigation measures.
Bill, just a quick question on that. If there is some sloughing, whose liability would that be? Let's say a year from now, there is sloughing.
The property owner.
Okay.
The property owner of the house who is sloughing?
No, no, no. The property owner of the apartment building or condo building, whatever it turns out to be, based on this meeting.
Right, because they will have cut out the land and caused the other-
So that's even-
The sloughing will be on their property. It will be on the-
Right, but it could, they may not care about the sloughing, which it's the person who's losing it cares. I'm just wondering if after the fact, a year to five years after, does that, do they are really liable that late after?
Yes.
I'll, I'll let Gordon. While he's coming up. The question about tax base, this is actually good for the city's tax base in that every single-family home you see around this is draining the city's tax base. Building of this density, of this size is actually good for the city's tax base because the value of that building is very high. And all of the improvements inside this are private. So it's all at the expense of the property owner or owners to maintain that. The city doesn't have to maintain any of that. And the property value is high enough that we get enough property tax off of that that it actually is better for us than single-family homes.
So the question is the sloughing of the hill after it's been set in place. So Bill's correct. So you're responsible for everything on your side of the property line. Anything that goes wrong, you're, that's why we don't let people build past their property line. So any excavation, where they build the retaining wall is all going to be on the developer's side of the property. So they'll be responsible for keeping it, maintaining it, repairing it, any issues that come from that. Bill indicated that one of the things we require is a geotechnical report that will look at all the aspects associated with that wall. What needs to be put there, if there's drainages that need to go in to protect the wall. But ultimately, it's the property owner that's responsible for that. There has been cases of people, you know, up in Davis County, there was homes that sloughed off. And in Draper, we've seen that, even here in Provo, a number of years goes in the Sherwood Hills, we've seen that. And each of those cases, here in Provo, particularly, the property owners who sloughed, they're the ones that have to take care of their problem. So you're not allowed to put your dirt on your neighbor's property. Did that help?
Wait, what are you saying? I, I was okay until the last word.
Yeah.
You're not allowed to put your dirt on someone else's property. But if you're building, but in this case, if the developer is building up and it sloughs down, is that-
Yeah, again, you can't, if you, if you cause damage to somebody else's property, you're likely-
If you caused it, okay.
You can't take their dirt either. Just as you can't give your dirt, you can't grab their stuff either, so.
And this would open them to civil liability. So if, if my backyard slides off into theirs because they did a bad job on their retaining wall, I can sue them for those damages.
She's right. It is, ends up being a civil situation. The city is not the primary player in that.
Councillor Bogdan.
Gordon. As far as the traffic issue goes, I mean, this is by the stadium, so I'm going to assume it has a lot of traffic. And they talked about these additional 100 units coming in. What does that mean for traffic in this area?
We would require a traffic study, but at the end of the day, these 100 units will be a very small impact to what is anticipated for continual growth on Canyon Road. So Canyon Road, we anticipate a lot more traffic over the next decade. And this won't be a key element of that. It's, it's certainly nominal in terms of what we're thinking it would be, but there'd still be required a traffic impact study.
Thanks, Gordon.
My last point, which was actually the first point raised, was ever property values.
Yes.
Property values are established by what are called comparables, right, for like properties. I've never seen a title report or, or an appraisal report in my career that has said your house is worth $700,000 based on comparables. But now we need to discount that by some percentage because there's a different type of home near you or even adjacent to you. I've just never seen that. They're based on comparables, like to like. So I, I would be surprised if this development had a negative property impact on property values in the immediate area. That's all I have.
I have one quick. Councillor Whipple?
So this is, is for Bill. I understand that in the past, we had been able to reduce parking requirements for some of the buildings because they met certain standards. And we found out that that was a bad thing because it caused lots of overflow parking onto the streets. And am I right in remembering that because of that experience, we changed the minimum parking requirements? Or we don't allow certain discounts?
We did, so we didn't allow as much, the ability to ask for as much of a reduction.
Reduct, that's the word. I was losing it.
The ability to ask for a reduction is still there. But Tim Towers didn't ask for any, but parked at the code requirement. This is going over the code requirement.
Okay, so even though we've, we've had issues with some developments in our city not having enough parking. We have changed the requirements to address that. So if this were parked for our code requirement, we believe it would be sufficient, but it's not. It's parked at extra parking, so.
The required number of parking spaces would be 201. He's proposed 240.
Okay, and then one of the things that we were looking at proffering, or was being considered in a proffer, was that a parking spot would be included with rent so that you wouldn't be disincentivizing the people who live there from parking in that lot.
Yeah, so let's be careful about that word. In staff will be careful about that word because it may be different than one space per unit. The requirement in the development agreement band of being based on bedrooms or something like that. It may be well, it may well be more than one space per unit.
Yeah, and that was something that was kind of mentioned almost in passing in the work meeting today was that there might be some dedicated spaces per unit, but then there would be other ones that maybe you could, could choose to pay additional money to have access to.
That's not unusual.
Okay.
Units will, projects will include a certain amount in your rent, number in your rent. But if you want more than that, then they'll charge you for that extra.
Okay.
Which I think is fair. I think if somebody's gonna bring more than two cars onto a site, maybe they should pay an impact fee.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Garrett.
Bill, another question from one of the property owners up on the hill. He referred to utilities coming from Canyon Road up. I assume all of that would be addressed in the project's development as well in terms of utilities.
Yes, if the zoning is granted, the next stage is very labor intensive in turn of all of the, in terms of all the engineering details. And that's actually one of the reasons why some of the departments in the city like the idea of taking the hillside down is that utilities actually work better, taking the hillside down and bringing the utilities off Canyon Road. Than trying to have to bring utilities in from the east where we have no easements for those utilities.
Are there currently utilities above ground that will now go underground because of that development?
There may well be a power line like was referred to. If there is, that'll have to be mitigated by taking it underground or finding some other solution. But all of those things are looked at in the next stage of development if this moves forward.
Any other questions or anything?
Okay. This is actually for Gordon. How many properties still have flood irrigation in Provo? Because I know in my neighborhood, it was really sad when we lost that option some years ago.
There are, it's surprising how many have turned up, but it's not a lot. It's just spread out all over. There's, there's remnant irrigators all over the city and it's just weird to find them, but yes, we still have some.
Okay, and.
I don't know the number.
Well, will they be able to continue doing that or is? Cause I know my neighborhood was not happy when we lost that option and they didn't really have a lot of choice about it.
So, so the state's really protective of irrigation canals and right away. So they have the ability to work with the irrigation company to relocate this pipe that's providing the irrigation. I do not believe they have a right. Unless they bought all the rights from everybody, they would not have the right to cut it off. Because it's a pressurized system, it'll be fairly easy to relocate. If they're gravity fed, it's much more challenging because you, you can't, you have to be very careful. But because it's a pressurized irrigation.
Well, no, I'm speaking more about the gentleman who has the flood irrigation to the east of it, not about the canal that's going through it.
I believe it's coming from his property to this, so I don't believe.
So it's connected over.
Uphill of this pipe.
Okay, I was just really curious about that.
This still serves people, so it'd have to stay in.
Okay.
In service.
So whatever studies that they're going to do will need to take into account that flooding and saturation of the soil.
They'll have, right, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Point of order, the developer has had a chance to speak.
Yes, that was next. Would the developer like to come speak?
Uh, thank you, excuse me. I guess I just wanted to recover a couple of points or answers, hopefully. Can't believe I'm losing my voice here, but the, there has been a soils report done and submitted to the city. That soils report says the soils will handle up to a one and a half to one slope with the existing soils that were tested. We're not proposing a one and a half to one. We're proposing a two to one as additional, less slope. So it's a two to one slope. So every two feet you go out, it goes one. The only thing that would be impeded by is, would be additional retaining and building or structures, which would be dealt with as they mentioned. The elevation, as Bill mentioned, of the property will be lower. Right now, I stand on top of that hill in an existing house that goes up 27 so feet above the 53 feet of the front. So right now, I can stand in the house that's sitting on top and look into the stadium, so to speak, or the end of it. Obviously, with that house being removed and 53 foot or so on the front being removed, the 45 feet will be about, what, 35 feet lower than the top of the existing home sitting on there. So it was a 53 feet, but there's a home on the front of it. Oh, thank you. So I wanted to clarify that. The water, only water, as far as pressurized irrigation, is like, say, a water pipe. A pressurized irrigation pipe, which will be relocated based on the layout, which will also be approved both by the water company. And obviously, desire to change and do that's gonna be when the water is not running through the system. Which it isn't right now. Running through the system would make it. You couldn't do it, you could, but it'd be mighty expensive to relocate a pressurized irrigation line that's full. So that would be done off-season as far as that way goes. And I actually have attended two separate neighborhood meetings that I was invited to, to share from the beginning of the previous iterations and this iteration. So I have been very conscious of the input and the variations of input I've received from what I thought was great. It was a lot higher, it was closer to attempt towers initially. But it wasn't as respectfully or likely received, if you will. So it's been modified to this more conservative approach along with some possible townhouses along the front of this, as was discussed earlier. I don't know if there's any questions alike that I failed to cover as far as it could be questions.
All right, any questions for the developer? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council discussion. Counselor Craig Christensen.
So this is a, this is a big decision. It's a big, it will impact the neighborhood. And again, I care very, I care a great deal about how neighbors experience these, these decisions we make. I, I'm not, there's some things missing for me that I don't feel comfortable voting for this tonight. I would actually suggest we continue this because I would like to actually see the owner occupancy issue addressed. And I know there's been an offer of, you know, 12 units, so it's like 12% of the project. To me, that's not compelling. We've, we've got to figure out a way to, to balance this. It's always a balance. Do we need 100 units of rent? Yes, we could use a hundred of affordable housing. This isn't touching that. It's not helping that. It's not helping in a number of, but there, there must be some sort of balance. And I'm, I'm just not convinced, it's just not compelling enough for me to make this kind of decision to just bring 100 rental units on them or 88 and then 12. I, I would like to see something that's this much more compelling. So I would, I wouldn't feel comfortable actually voting for this this evening without seeing something more compelling around homeownership.
Counselor Handley.
I'm just kind of curious about the, the, the offer of those townhouses around the edge for sale. I mean, is that, that's not, that's not a bullet point here in the development agreement. So how would we go about knowing that that's what we're gonna get?
The developer proffered that in this afternoon's meeting. Is that still a proffer?
Okay, that's what I.
So you can have that now as a bullet point.
Okay.
And was it 12 then or what's the number?
12 was the number represented this afternoon.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that. I mean, as I said earlier today, I, I, I mean, I'm okay if, if the rest of the council feels they want to take more time trying to study this issue of homeownership in that area, but I'm, I'm, I don't want to make presumptions about what I, what's possible market-wise in that kind of a location for ownership of that type. And I think we're kind of flying in the dark a little bit, speculating about it. And I don't feel comfortable making those speculations. And I'm, I'm less concerned about making that something like 100% or, or, or above 50% homeownership in that particular location. I'm not convinced that that location is what that needs. That's the best use of that location. But I'm happy to have more conversation about that. But at this point, I at least would want that, that offer of the townhomes to be part of the development agreement.
Counselor Garrett.
I acknowledge the proactive measures that the developer has taken. Offering parking above and beyond what is required for the project. The added slope concession there as well. The, it helps to understand the gradual building height there and the impact that will have on the neighborhood. So I feel positive about some of the measures the developer has taken. Knowing however, that our, a focus of this council this year has been to move the needle on homeowner occupancy. I also would like to see a little more potential there for how we use this property in helping add to the inventory of for-sale properties in our city.
I, one thing that one of the speakers mentioned was the idea that at Garden Villas, you know, the last few homes that have sold have been to investors. I do worry about making this just heavier, heavier renters and you're gonna move out. The families, Garden Villas is a great project and it's been heavily owned and occupied for a long time. I've known a lot of people that have lived there and it's a entry-level housing that some people can get into now, which is harder and harder. And so much of our entry-level housing is rentals already. Joaquin and Mazer and Foothills and you know, a lot of it gets picked up because it is the price it is and used as investor properties with students. So I don't want, I don't want that to be the future of Garden Villas and I am concerned about that. That's why it does matter, the mix of ownership with rental and that just pushing more and more rental is gonna push more and more into Pleasant View and those other neighborhoods. It concerns me a lot. Counselor Whipple.
So in, in looking at our general plan, one of the, the things that we've got is about our resident students, that they want more housing options, not just the student batching. But we end up seeing them in Tim Towers and other places. And a lot of our students are married students, they have little families. So they need housing that they can live in that's appropriate. And it says in our plan, the city should support the development of high-density student housing near its campus as appropriate. And I, this is not high-density housing. This is kind of a medium density. So it's more respectful to the neighborhood than what the plan is indicated would be appropriate in this area so close to campus. And I really love the proffer of having a mix of housing types on this property, right? Where you could have townhomes or condos for sale and then have apartments. I know that, that we do want more properties that are able to be occupied by the people who own them. But I think we would remiss if we ignored the rental housing market. Because if you are paying huge, huge amounts for your rental property, it's much harder to save up to be able to purchase a property. And I've got a daughter who is renting a studio for 845 a month. Right? Like, how is, how is she going to, to be able to, to buy a house even though she works full-time and, and does this? And so having more rental units that are designed to be good rental units helps with our housing affordability situation. And I would hope that we could get to the point where we've got better rental units so that we could maybe claw back some of the single-family homes that are being used as rentals. I don't know if that's gonna happen, but that happened with my house. And it's happened with, with some houses in my neighborhood. Because really, we want to be able to convert back that single-family housing stock into houses that people live in who own the house instead of renting it as an investor property. And one way to do that is to increase our stock of good rental units. They'll be more attractive as rental units than some of the, these really old houses that are in my neighborhood. Because I've lived in one in Joaquin that I think was a definite health hazard when I was an undergraduate student. I want to have better housing for everyone who lives in our city, whether they're able to purchase the home or whether they're renters. And I think we have a responsibility to all of those residents.
Counselor Handley.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wanting to help, help the decision-making process here. I'm, I'm a little unclear as to the, for, for those of you who've expressed hesitancy with this, what, what's our alternative? I mean, what's Plan B? What, where, what are we telling the developer and what are we telling Bill Pepperoni in terms of going forward about locations like this? That we don't want to see MDR developments? I'm not, I'm not trying to pick a, pick an argument about this. I just, I feel like we're kind of sending mixed signals and they don't know what's going on. I don't know, Bill, if I'm putting words in your mouth, but I mean, it seems like, seems like you need us to say, we don't want to see any more proposals for medium or high-density housing anywhere until we have more single-family detached homes or this is not the right, appropriate use of this property. We want to see the zoning remain the same. Or we do agree that this is the right place, but maybe we need to tweak this a little further. I don't, I just, I'm, if we just say no to this, I, I would be very frustrated if I were the developer. Because I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know what, what we were supposed to do differently.
Yeah, you're asking very good questions, but I think the question Mr. Christensen was asking was, I'm not comfortable with this in terms of owner occupancy. Developer, what are you willing to do to assuage my fear or my concern? I think that was the, and he was giving the developer the chance to go back and think about that and maybe sharpen his pencil. The questions you're asking are a little bit more higher level and broader, which would be very helpful to us and to development community. But Mr. Christensen was trying to be specific, I think.
Like while we do need more single-family homes, we know that to get people into owning a home, they need smaller square footage, right? They need townhomes, they need condos, they need duplexes, fourplexes.
I guess my question is, are we, are we always gonna say no to a development that has rentals? Cause that's what it's feeling like.
No, but like this is in a mix of. No, but like this is in a mix of single family homes and some some, you know, higher density.
Well, a lot, a lot. And it's right by a very busy road. It's right by mass transit. These are the indicators where we would say we we want that's where we want to grow in terms that's where we want to densify. But I I and I don't even know if I know the answer to this. It's like, am I always going to want every medium to higher density development proposal to say we want certain percentages of homeownership? Or is that too much? Is that like inappropriate to ask of certain kinds of projects where it's like, well, that's not really what we need there? I I just feel like we're we've got mixed, we've got different priorities and we're kind of smashing them together. And I'm not really sure that we're we're being very systematic about it. And maybe maybe we need to hammer that out a little bit more, but I just feel like we're having the same problem with lots of different proposals where we keep coming around to these questions of homeownership, but we don't have the, you know, the criteria that we're going to use to say this is this is what we would want as a minimum, or this is what we we would need to have addressed before we would know that this is the appropriate kind of project to ask that of the developer or not. Do you see what I'm trying to get at?
Count Counselor Garrett.
We've acknowledged the apartments to the south of this property, stadium terrace and the the new the new one, temp towers. Everything to the north of this is or should be homeowner occupied. It's news to me that investors are buying some of these up, but all of Garden Villa, the townhomes on the corner of 2230 North and Canyon Road on the southeast corner and the northeast corner, a three story Canyon Terrace building, all of those are available as for sale products. So I view this as maybe a transition property between the apartments and the for sale product to the north. So I would be looking for something greater than 12% in terms of townhomes or homeowner occupancy, but fair questions, Councilmember Hadley Hadley. And I think it's important to consider that as well.
Counselor Bogdan.
So, Bill, Planning Commission had something with the downtown zones come to them last week, right? About bonus density or whatever. So I think George, even though it's downtown, it's not necessarily university. I think that conversation is coming to us soon, right? Something similar?
That was a request for additional building height. If you had a percentage of owner occupancy, I think building height would be at odds with what the neighbors would like. So that's not going to help us in this case.
Not in this case, but it will help us.
Downtown.
At least set kind of the basis that George was talking about, right? Or no, am I completely off?
It it could. The amendment that's coming before you is optional to the developer. If the developer would like to go over 100 feet in building height, which is the maximum now, they would have to have a certain percentage of owner occupancy or for sale housing. That's what's coming before you.
Thanks, Bill. So it's a start, George.
Counselor Garrett, I mean, Counselor Christensen.
And I think you're I think you're asking very fair questions. And I don't I don't know either what it is. I do think there is something to this transition, because even in the project, I think I think it's reasonable to say 12% is not compelling. I'm not saying it has to be 75, but something that makes not just the not just the project, but helps the neighborhood in terms of the homeownership. I think it makes a big difference. And so Bill was accurate. What I'm saying is my motion when it comes to that would be to encourage the developer to come back with something more compelling than 12%. Because I think I think we as a city need to do better than just let's go with a large, large project, another large project of just rentals. We need rentals, but we we need every single kind of housing stock. And I we keep saying yes to very large projects that are all rental and or, you know, higher density. And I just I just think we we need something that's more transitional than that. And so we we may need more discussion to come up with more of a formula. But yeah, I don't know what that is, but my my own way in is 12% is not compelling enough to take action.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll I'll make I'll make a motion that we continue this and encourage the developer to come back with with a different owner occupancy scenario. And again, it would be helpful to actually see what that might look like as well, so that neighbors and others could respond to it.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, second by Gary Garrett. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Bogdan.
I just want to read these really quick so that the developers clear on what was handed to us. But it says landscape bond be provided should the hillside be removed? And from the discussion this afternoon, it was the entire site, not just the hillside. Sewer facilities are currently insufficient for density higher than the previously approved subdivision plan. New canal placement to be addressed by Canal Company. If there's rentals, parking will be included in the rent. 100 unit limitation on the density and the for sale product, I guess, right? Okay, thanks.
Any more discussion?
Counselor Whipple. If we're we're going to continue this to give the the developer a chance, I would appreciate it if when he came back to us with numbers, he could say, if I have, you know, 10% or 30% or 50% of these as for sale units, this is what the numbers look like for the cost of those units for the cost of rent, because I think this is a very expensive project with removing the hill and doing the different upgrades that the city is going to need him to pay for in order to make this project work. And so I want to know if we are requiring more of the stock to be for sale with deed restrictions or whatever, how that affects the numbers and what that comes for like the price of those units. Right? So if we end up with, you know, if it ends up being 50% for sale, but all of those units have to cost $1.2 million, have we addressed what we needed? Right? Or if we only have 12 units for sale, but those 12 units would be in the like five to $700,000 range, then we're we're hitting a different demographic in need. And if he's got any projections for the cost of the rentals, you know, what he expects the market would support, I think that might help us because, you know, not only are we concerned about owners occupying and be able to build that equity in their home, we're concerned about attainable housing, both for people who are purchasing it and people who are renting it. And if what we're asking for makes this project into housing that is really not appropriate for the people who who would need to live in it because it costs too much, we need that information. And so that that ends up being a lot of numbers, sir, I'm so sorry. But that might be helpful as we're looking at the possible consequences of the the things that we're asking of him.
Counselor Handley.
Yeah, I I thought we talked in the work session and maybe maybe we need to talk more about it, but the the mix the mix of ownership and rental is not healthy. What I think is being offered is separating two different types, which may be the only way to make it work unless we're deciding we need to go to 100% ownership. But I don't think 100% is appropriate for this location. So I I would I I just am a little confused as to why we want to mix when we were talking earlier about that not being a good a good solution.
Well, I I think we're there was discussion about we've heard these things. I don't think we know. I I don't know. And maybe someone on here does, but we we've heard a lot of different things here. Here's what I think I do know. Just continuing to create large apartment rental units. Yes, we need them, but it it loses the entire balance that we're trying to create in terms of an ecosystem of a neighborhood. What I'm am convinced of is that we we I don't think we should keep just rubber stamping projects that will pencil for developer. I it's not our responsibility to create projects for developers. So that's on one end of the spectrum. On the other hand, because we could be talking about it has to be 100 units of affordable housing. Do you know how many we there's such a need for affordable housing? And so the developer could make a project that is actually affordable housing. We could be arguing that as well. I just know that we need some sort of something more compelling than another 100 units of rentals, which takes that neighborhood further into the rental and we we're losing families. And so we need families, we need renters, we've got students, we need all of this. My concern is we're not balancing that. We continue to to default to more rentals. Not that they're bad. I think we're out of balance. That's that's what I'm sensing.
Counselor Whipple.
I I think you misspoke when you said families and then renters, as though they were two different categories. Okay, yeah, good. I knew that wasn't what you intended. I understand. I get hot too. Yeah, because I was a our family rented until we were able to buy our home here in Provo.
And I rented till I was 38. So I get that. My family had five kids before we moved into a house. So no, I understand. I just think we it's easy to say, let's put up another building, another building and have it be all rental. It's harder to actually have this discussion figured out. I don't have the answers. And I do feel like we need something more compelling than 12 out of 100. Could we make progress on that? And could we figure something out? And could we make some progress there?
I understand. Yeah, I honestly feel like this this is a good project. I like the proffers that have been given. I'm happy to explore to see if it's feasible to to shift that percentage. Although, and and you do make a good point that we are not here to to serve the developers, but they are our partners in helping us provide this housing in our city. And I don't want to be I don't want to be moving goalposts on them. And I don't want to be so antagonistic that they don't want to come and work here because that will certainly hurt us. And we'll either have bad developers coming in. I don't want to scare off the good ones, or we just won't have the progress that we need. And if we're difficult on on some projects, I think that has a quelling effect on all of the developers and and different projects, including the ones that we're super, super excited about. So that's that's my my hesitation in in doing a delay or or asking for more. I I really think that this is an appropriate proposal for this area. I I ride my bike on the street to go to work and to come home from work every day. So I'm I'm on there. I see how busy it is or how busy it isn't. Honestly, my biggest problem with traffic is when those the single family homes on the the west side of the street, sometimes people will park cars in the bike lane right there and like half on the sidewalk, half in the bike lane. That's the only traffic problem I've encountered, other than it being closed down for a BYU game. So I really think that this is is a good thing. And I don't want to I don't want to be too discouraging to our potential partner who's trying to help us address many aspects of our housing problem.
Take a vote on the motion. Counselor Whipple.
Just to this is Craig's motion to continue this. Is there a date at which we want to hear this again, whenever the builder wants to come back?
I'd say our next our next session. I don't know when that is. January 14th.
Sir, would you be available to come back on January 14? Would you want to come back?
I guess the question lies as to what level of detail on some of these things. The other challenge you face with in management managing effectively a nice apartment complex, it requires so many units. If you get so many that are owned in that kind of an application, your management to manage the others suffers or it becomes more costly, therefore pushes up the price of the units. And it kind of creates a double whammy, but depending on the level of detail associated with what you want to see would dictate whether we could have it. And the cost to get that information to enough state where I'd be comfortable saying, all right, units proposed on this with the level of drawings we have with this amount of variable is roughly here. Or if you're wanting to see drawings showing the townhouse, I guess that would be my question back to you is what level with the numbers I was hearing speaking? There's a lot of variation into the amount of drawings, costs, structures, bids, other things back to be able to.
I would suggest that we not ask for elevations or drawings at this point. This is simply an exercise in the performa.
Yes.
And we can help you put you in touch with some people that can help you with that if that's necessary. But this is a formulaic thing. That you're looking for.
Okay. And and I just want to recognize that we have some holidays coming up. And so I I want you to think about the balance between getting us to act a little bit faster, yes or no? And how much time you need, given that there's this crazy holiday situation coming up?
Well, and certainly time is money as well. So I think what you're saying is, why don't you tell us when you'd like to come back? And then we'll accommodate that and.
And while he's considering that, I think I should also mention on Justin and everybody else's behalf, you know, our timeline for materials is over a week before the meeting. So if you're out of country at the beginning of or out of state, you know, I mean, staff's normal practice for a 14th meeting would be to ask that all materials be in by the 6th.
So I don't think coming back at the beginning of January makes sense.
Other challenges that affect me is when if the hillside to remove that in the next X amount of months, three months, we'll have you get the dirt removed. Because of that water line we mentioned, it's on the project, it needs to be completed, if will, before irrigation season starts. So the longer I wait, there's there's.
You may lose a whole year.
Correct. Yeah, we've already been playing with it over a year now, but do I want to do it right? Am I looking to retain? Or am I looking to sell these? I'm looking to retain these, the ones that I would own for. You know, my plan was to keep them forever, but we not all live only so long. So but regardless, those are other things, but I'd be glad to work with Bill in relationship to what we perceive as additional answers. And I don't have to be here the whole time. I have architects and engineers and other things. I can be dictating those workloads to be handled more.
Okay, that helps me understand the motion and the kind of timeline that we're looking at. I think what we would would expect is that you would come back as soon as you're ready. Meeting the the deadline for getting documents in. And that's probably going to be in January or maybe the first part of February at the latest. Does that sound like?
Or late January? Is there just one in January?
No, there's two.
The 28th is the next one.
So I I don't know that we need to amend the motion to add that in. I just wanted the clarification before we sent him off so that there was good. Okay, so we're back to me trying to vote.
Yep, Counselor Whipple.
I'll say yes.
Counselor Brett Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
No.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
I'm impressed you're still on here, Travis.
Hey, hanging on every word.
Counselor McKay, yes, that vote passes 6-1. All right, if there is no objection, we will now recess the municipal council and convene as the redevelopment agency governing body board by unanimous consent.
See, do I have?
Let's see, do I have? Okay, I'm like, it was, that page was blank. I'm like, all right. We have an implied motion on a resolution amending the bylaws of the Redevelopment Agency of Provost City Corporation. This will be presented by Justin Harrison, our council executive director.
Good morning, er, good morning, man. It feels like morning.
We've been here so long.
I promise. I didn't mean to say that. I'm a little disappointed. I thought everyone was staying for the bylaws, but real quickly, this is a proposed update to the Provost City Redevelopment Agency bylaws. We reviewed these in the work meeting and had made some minor corrections based off of the board's input. So this is the resolution before you. Let's see. And this is Exhibit A, contains the proposed amendments to those bylaws. So there was one unintended change that has been changed back. So in section one point three, form, a majority of the members of the board constitutes a quorum at a meeting of the board. This next page is where a majority of the changes come in in Article Two. Quite a few of these are just conforming changes with Utah State Code, Section seventeen C that sets out the parameters for redevelopment agencies or community redevelopment authorities and changes some of the titles included therein. The two changes that were requested during the work meeting are found in sections two point three and two point four regarding the chair and vice chair. So section two point two, I'm sorry, two point three now reads the chair or chair, the vice chair of the Provo Municipal Council shall serve as the board chair. And now in this case, if the council vice chair declines to serve as the board chair, the board shall choose a chair by a majority vote. And I think, I think that gets to the intent of what was discussed in the, in the work meeting, but throw something at me if, if that doesn't. And then next you'll see in section two point four, contemplates kind of two items. So the vice chair is the chair of the Provo Municipal Council and shall serve as the vice chair of the board. However, if the council chair declines, declines to serve as the board vice chair or is unavailable to serve by virtue of having been chosen by the board to serve as the board chair in the case of the provision in section two point three, then there would be a vote of the board for the vice. So and then other than those, those changes on the next couple of pages in, continued in Article Two and Article Three are again conforming changes with state law. And then we have in Article Four, just the effective date, this day, the seventeenth of December, twenty twenty-four. So that's all I've got. Any questions, any discomfort?
Any questions for Justin?
No, I, I like the changes that you've made here.
No, it's.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you for, for making those changes for us. It's always fun to see like little intimations of our mortality in documents that we're looking at, resignation or death. We don't always run into that. Okay, is there any council discussion on this or board discussion? Sorry, I was reading the notes and they didn't say board. All right, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. Board Member Bogdan.
No, we haven't, we still haven't done that. We still haven't made the implied motions for the board. Sorry, Chair.
I'm, I'm reading my script here, sir. Okay, so we have not changed that. Okay.
They are coming.
Can we have a motion to accept the resolution to amend the bylaws as presented here?
Oh, motion, no.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And the motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Now we will have a vote on the explicitly made motion. Bogdan, yes. Christensen.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
Handley.
Yes.
Hoban.
Yes.
He's still here.
McKay, yes. And Whipple is yes. That vote is seven zero in favor. No. If there's no objection, we will now adjourn the governing board of the Redevelopment Agency by unanimous consent. Thank you, friends.
Thanks.